Does everybody think the lower bid could work?
Me.
Yeah.
Make the motion that we uh, stated volumes did of seven oh seven forty-two plus two hundred dollars for new sink. Apply for a thousand dollar grant from Roger and Lewis Wolf Foundation.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Portion carry hands. Tracy?
Yes, sir.
What? For?
Have you checked to do the classes yet?
Um. I got your email the other day and I'm gonna be in contact with him.
Okay.
Do. Spring, February. That's what the emails say.
Okay.
So, I'll be in contact with him to do that.
Is there a deadline to sign up for that?
I don't remember if the emails had a deadline on there or not.
Like, I don't even receive.
The one before the last one, I wouldn't be able to, I would be able to make it. My truck is uh, it's.
Okay.
Yeah. Stuff done to my truck, which by then should be done. I'll be more than ready.
Okay. So, then we need to ask about um. If we want, are we gonna pay for the class and then mileage and the lots of workout.
So, where is the class at, Tracy?
Uh. It hasn't been decided.
Oh. And that's middle of this month?
Jay, then.
No, no.
Jay.
No, I ain't gonna be able to do one this month.
Okay.
Probably not.
Then we'll decide when we're disclosing the time.
We're just, we're gonna go everything and what the prices have been worked out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess this would be Tracy's territory, the, the uh, pump house.
Yeah, that heater used to come out.
Well, yeah, uh, John contacted me the other day and wanted to know about a heater thing there. We don't have a heater, so he said he could come over the heater, put it in the pump house.
Okay.
To keep it from freezing till, till like, then using water out of it in this fall.
Okay.
Uh, and then, when the time comes, you have to shut that water off.
Yes.
It hurts a lot, I'm, you've done that before?
Uh, do, I have, no.
Okay, well, Joe Williams, I think, has done it.
Yeah.
And probably Roland has done it. And uh, earlier, the cop, the valve, I call it valve, I don't know. Was on top of meter pit.
Okay.
Had fallen down in and broke off the shut-off valve that they use to drain that water back. Just, just broke off the panel, didn't break off the valve, it broke off the handle.
Okay.
Looks like there's enough there, you can maybe put a handle on to turn that, open it to drain that back.
Okay.
And the meter pit lid gives in the bottom, turn the bottom, long way down, and that's the end wire, something to fish it back out of.
Alright.
And then I think it'd be a good idea, some kind of insulation to put just in there to hold that heat from the ground in there so it don't.
Yeah.
Have a chance to freeze.
Yeah.
So it can just be, sit down with the cop or something, just to keep that heat in there. So, John said he would contact the city when they're done using that and then have to take the meter out and drain that back, shut it off.
Joel has to do it too.
Oh, Joel, yeah?
Yeah.
And then you can either do it. We need to take that, just make sure I get a picture of the ringing off of it.
Okay.
Well, if the mid cell valve either broke that, maybe our, we can still do it, get rid of it.
Well, somehow to keep that on, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I think the valve itself has, has got a piece broke out of it. Uh, but it doesn't sell no real well, but uh, that's actually, I think, two meter pits deep.
So.
For Kansas. But for the time being, I think we need to insulate it when we do cover it up. Keep that ground heat in there.
Yeah.
Just a heads up for you, go let the city know and then we can let you know that it's ready to be done.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
I have a couple more things for new business. Um, I don't know. About this, but the league sent a bill to the city for a guide for Kansas Open Meeting Act in your name. But you don't have here, your email doesn't, we don't get emails, do you? How do you? So we, we've never received the book, so I don't know why we. Cause I've never received any.
Well, when you return a general, I had something good, I would send a note.
But it's charged in a sixty, sixty-three point four. Never got a book from them. I didn't get it in the mail, and she says she didn't get the mail.
There's not a DVD app or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay.
That's not your book, yeah.
That, this, this is, well, it should have been sent to me. Cause I ordered that book.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'll take care of this.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I need to, let me just write that down. Okay, and then um, Fred Hall's house, um, he used to pay for the uh, water that they, the guy that rinsed the house out there. Um, but his daughter Janelle has taken over that and she had sent, um, he still wants, she still wants uh, Fred Hall's name on the bill for the estate. So she sent me everything for the um, the certification of trust existence, so uh, she sent all that and say it's stating that it's still under Fred Hall's. Yeah. So, we have that, so she just wanted to make sure, and I just usually copy the bill, I'll send it to her by uh, email, so I don't remember sending it to her. Okay, and then this one. I don't know if anybody wants a copy of this or not, while I go over it. You're more than happy to have a copy. Does not matter to me, if you want a copy, pass it on, if not, I didn't make one for everybody, so. Okay, Luke. I, I redid your garden. Your shop and your house. So, um, I went back, I put all the figures in, um, and then I stated how much gallons you had used. So on your garden, um. On your garden for September, or for June, you paid, it was two hundred, but you paid for fifteen hundred gallons, which you have a twenty-four fifty credit, we're on that one. And then in July, you had three hundred dollar, or three hundred meter use there. September, you had a hundred use, but you paid for six hundred gallons, so therefore you have a twenty dollar credit there. So on your garden, it was twenty-four, plus twenty-four fifty plus twenty, so for your garden, you should, you will be receiving, getting a check if council approves for forty-four fifty.
I want the gallons that I prepaid for at the over a thousand gallon rate. I don't just want credit back because you've had the benefit of my funds for the time, I just want the gallons that I paid for credited to my account. I don't need a check back, I just need credit for the gallons that I paid for.
Well, I, we're gonna give you a credit back, so you have everything in, everything done, you're gonna get your credit back, so it's all taken care of, we have receipts, we have everything done, so we have no more problems with this. Your shop?
I'm just saying that I don't agree to that, you guys can do what you want, but what I would request is that you credit my account with the gallons that I've actually paid for.
Um, so your shop, you have. You paid the sewage, uh, sewage for twelve dollars on your house. Um, in June, you were charged five hundred gallons, so that was the twenty, but you had paid twelve already, so that, um, that only gave you a twenty dollar credit there. And then for October, you just owe for twelve. So the credit for June is twenty minus your twelve, so you only get an eight dollar credit for your shop, for that one. Now your house bill, he has put on, he put on extra zeros when we went back and I took pictures of your meter. So now I have your meter having one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spaces with a zero at the end, which we do not use. So that's probably what he was putting in there, so now I have a number of spaces on there. Um, so we went back and did all that. So, uh, it shows how much you paid on those for April. You paid twelve and you would, it was for nine hundred, so the, you paid twelve on that, so you owe twenty on that one. Um, May, you have seventeen hundred, cause I went back and figured all the numbers back over again. You paid thirty-eight, thirty on that one, so that one was fine. June, you paid thirty-seven forty for six hundred gallons, but it should have been fifteen hundred gallons, so that was thirty-six fifty that you owe. So between both of them, there is a ninety-six credit for that one. Uh, July, there were, you paid one ninety forty for eighteen thousand gallons. There was only two thousand, so the owes forty-one, so if you take those minus that, that was one forty-nine forty for credits. August, you had two forty-six, you paid for twenty-four thousand, it was twenty-five hundred gallons, which was forty-five fifty, which you owes of that. So if you take those two amounts, subtract, that was a twenty-two hundred and fifty dollar credit there. September, you had paid one sixty-three forty for fifteen thousand six hundred, that one was only fifteen gallons for thirty-six fifty, which you owe. So take those back off, which was one twenty-six ninety for credit. October is twelve hundred, which that's twenty-one eighty plus the twelve equals thirty-eight eighty, which you owe. Um, so the, what you owe is twenty, twenty dollars is thirty-three eighty, so that's a total of fifty-three eighty is what you owe, and if you take all the credits, uh, comes to four seventy-seven seventy. So if you take the credits minus the, what you owe, you, you should get back for twenty-three ninety for a credit for your house. And then we are going to, I'm going to replace your meter. Cause we looked at that the other day and it's about eighteen, nineteen years old, so we think we made the meter maybe off or not reading numbers or something.
Will I get a copy of the paperwork?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, that'd be appreciated.
So, is a lot of this meter reader problem?
Yeah, he was adding the extra zero, so I went back and then I checked how many spaces and I just put the spaces on the paper, so I know.
Well, what I'm getting at is we need to make sure you know how to read the meters.
Yes.
Cause that's, you know, part of the problem.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so. So for the garden.
So you're thinking there was a problem with the training, the current meter reader?
He was just adding the zero on, I believe, yes.
So is that a training, training issue with him?
I did ask him about it, so he just probably just put it on there and didn't, did not know about that one.
He was adding the, or he wasn't moving the little black box?
Yeah, that little black one, yeah.
I, I remember when this started happening, that I had spoken with uh, Vicki and asked her, at her, if she had explained to him how to read those meters. And she said, yes, she had told him, but he apparently forgot and started putting the zeros on there.
Yeah. Cause I did go around looking that very first time he read the meters.
So, bottom line is, wouldn't we be able to?
Okay, that is what I'm working on for it now.
Now, while she's doing that, um, I was. Informed that. Luke and Vicki were texting back and forth. And there was a problem, I guess it must be this problem. And Luke responded, I shouldn't have to do your work for you every month and give you answers, but I'm literally paying you to do the job. I want you to be able to check your work, at least pretend to do your job, and have to check the records. You, that you are supposed to be keeping and see if you can figure out what is wrong before you ask me for help. And that's pretty much harassment, in my opinion. You don't need to treat our city clerk that way. I doubt that the city clerk under your administration was ever treated that way. So I'm asking you, ask him courtesy when you're talking to anybody on the city council. Okay?
I do my best to have courtesy when I'm dealing with people, but Dale.
You do, wait, now, what, what now? You do what?
I do my best to have courtesy. I'm not, I'm not saying it always works. I'm, I'm in, I'm fallible just like anybody else. But after six months, no, nine months now, of having a problem with my water, at least one, sometimes more than one of my water meter bills every month. I expect the city clerk to at least glance at the records, when I get a response, when I say there's a problem with my billing and less than a minute, there's a response, there's nothing wrong with your bill, or what's the problem? All I want her to do is go back and look at her records and see if she missed something. I, you know, a reasonable review, look at her records, see if she missed something, that's all I'm expecting now. I'm not, I'm not expecting her to work magic, I just don't wanna. I shouldn't have to do, I shouldn't have to read the meter every month, I shouldn't have to do the calculations on the bills every month, just to get a, a meter that's, a, a billing that's accurate. And I'm not trying to be excessive, but after that long, I don't expect to do the, the work for her every month, at least if she has worked.
You were excessive, and we'd appreciate it if you don't do that again.
I understand your opinion, thank you Dale.
And every time I, you ask, I ask which property and you just, you have three properties, so I don't know which property, so you need to clarify it. And every time you did ask, I went over there, my husband went over with me, we reread it, and it came up the same numbers. So.
Is that a figure?
Um, the credit is four twenty-three ninety, and there'll be three checks for each one who has credit, so they are credited to them.
So you want four, four twenty-three ninety?
Four twenty-three ninety. Do you want credit for your bill on a check?
I want credit for the gallons I paid for.
I made a motion, we credit Luke four hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety cents by check. For, for over, over uh.
Could you repeat that, please?
Four twenty-three ninety. Uh, to Luke college for overcharging on the water bill. In the form of a check.
Why don't we give you credit?
Not this credit in his account.
Well, that way we don't have to continue seeing.
We don't have to try to catch up.
Catch up.
Keep track, never mind to catch up. This is taking care of, it'll start from zero this month. That's my motion.
State your motion one more time.
I made a motion to pay Luke college four hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety cents uh, by check to pay for overcharge on his water bill for three meters.
Alright, very good motion, do the second. Second, second, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, three, four, two, move.
Are you too abstaining from that, or just not?
They voted no.
They voted no.
You what, Tracy?
Abstain?
So what's it, what, what, what are you abstaining from? From, if you don't wanna vote yes?
You just voted no.
Exactly, they can vote no.
It doesn't matter if I vote no or abstain.
Well, I think there's a difference.
If I abstain, I'm not voting.
But you should give a reason for abstaining. Like, she abstained because she's married to the fire department. You abstain because you don't wanna offend somebody, or what? You should give a reason why you abstain. You're not in the personal department. You wanna abstain, you put that up?
No, I wanna abstain because I don't see why he can't have his credit to the account.
Well, then you go no. Then you vote no.
No.
He abstained.
I got it.
Don't tell the clerk how I vote.
Oh, why?
You told her I voted no, to start off with.
In fact, I'm sorry, should have done that.
It doesn't make a difference, because abstention scores at the top of your ballot, make it unanimous.
I think you do that.
Read your manual to find out. Okay, is there any more open?
Yep. Need this, sir?
I hear what he says, it doesn't work business.
Yeah, that was new business stuff.
That was? I thought so.
Hey, over the streets, uh, nothing on the streets, a sign that were brought us last night, I haven't had time to look at them, I haven't even been to go by and look at them, so, don't know where that's at.
We need a motion to order a, one or another sign for down there by Terry's, but it's not one, it was, well, it was in the ditch for years and now it's gone.
Years?
For at least a year.
And now all of a sudden it's.
Somebody knocked it over and it was in the ditch and now it's gone.
And now it's gone?
Yep.
I'll check on the signs, I'd like to do that.
Okay, Dale, check on the signs.
He's sharing, do you have a problem with your water bill?
Yes. I did some math on it, and you know, I sent you the reading that Joe did, because when the hose was hung on, it was right actually by here. Because I started to go out there waiting, and then I signed it up and read the meeting, and I thought, math, which was done. So anyways, after I found it was still running, however many days later, Joe Williams came over and read the meter. So, I did some math on um, the number that Joe gave me versus where he ended, the guy at desk that read the meter. And there was a difference of twelve thousand five hundred and thirty gallons that got used up, and it was six days of uh, can, can read the meter, any time the hose running. Or Angel did, can read it. So, what I'm asking is, about that twelve thousand five hundred and thirty gallons, is if the city would agree to reduce it back to city cost. I mean, I'm not saying I won't pay the bill, but if those get the numbers, but those gallon amounts could be reduced to the city's cost and not customer cost, it would make a little bit, I mean, it's been kind of a rough year for me, so.
So what would, said what's the difference between the, since we had time to check it out? I mean, between wholesale and retail price?
And I know we, we've actually completely reduced, like when Jill got that leak, she had.
Yeah, this is, she stated that she left the water on, that's like me leaving my water on, I want the city to pay my water.
Well, it did me out, that thirteen-year-old's in my backyard with a BB gun, and I don't move quickly.
Well, I know that, but that's just like me saying that I'm gonna pay.
But I'm not asking, we've reduced, we've completely eliminated people's bills, levers, completely eliminated their water bill, because they accidentally had a leak and didn't know.
There's still, still has a huge bill on it.
Well, I'm just saying, at that time, in the shelter house, you were there, Jackie, we, we took away, just like with Jill, we reduced, we gave her one month free and then reduced her cost to the city for the second month, even though she had a responsibility to fix her, or fix her water leak. In that, after that first month, when she was notified. Now, I'm, I've never been late on my water bill, not ever paid it, I mean, I've been it for fourteen years. I mean, I joked about it being the smallest bill I ever got, so I couldn't understand why it didn't get paid, but it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that's a lot, when I'm looking at car taxes, house taxes.
I know, and I also put in a note that knew that we could help you do.
Yeah, but every month I know I'll show a water bill.
Well, we'll, we'll work with you on that, so that's not, not an issue.
I don't think reducing it back to cost is asking too much.
So if I just leave my water, my water on overnight for two nights?
I could have lied, and said I had no idea why that meter read that, but I'm an honest person, so I would have, are you seriously arguing with me about this?
Kinda, yeah, if anybody counts, and I just wanna tie in on this.
Well, I'd like to know what the difference between what a bill would be retail and what it would be. Wouldn't it be normally?
And I don't know that I actually got it and left it on. I just know that Jax was out there shooting a BB gun at anything that moved and I was moving. Your grandson was the one having used a BB gun.
Did you shoot the water line, or how did?
No, no, he was shooting me like birds in one eye.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't stay, was cause he was shooting.
Is it pretty good shot?
I don't know, you can't really find out. I'm glad this is amusing, y'all. Maybe I need to contact him.
Well, I've lived here for fifty years, and I've never missed a water, well, I did one time, cause I don't know if I put it in the mail instead of the water slot or something. And Luke worked with me on that, I brought it up and I put it in there and there's no problem.
Yeah, but.
So for September.
But he was in there for fourteen years, you said, never had missed a bill, I'm just comparing.
Well, I realize I haven't lived here as long as you, but I still pay my bill in good faith every month.
Great, just a minute.
For September was nineteen hundred gallons, which was twenty-eight ten plus the twelve, so forty dollars and ten cent for that one. August. Uh, August was twenty-six, twenty-six hundred, which was forty-six forty.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm just asking you to reduce it to the city's cost, just an amount, that outrageous amount in six days, nobody can do that much more in six days.
But it's not the city's fault, and I guess it's not, I don't need fault, yes. It's Jax's fault, if you have to.
I'm not blaming Jax, I'm saying the circumstances created a situation where I didn't feel that safe.
Do you have any other comments? Dale, I'm wondering, there was a church, we had a school run for several days, if not, it was church, and Jack Owens was mayor at that time, and he worked with us, it's all like.
You say the difference between retail and wholesale, is that what you did, Dale, or do you know?
I don't know, but they did, I do know they did work with us.
Did work with them?
But it was, I'm honest, I'm not, it's a honest mistake, and I had no way, somebody used the school, and we didn't know it, we, which I. So, I would, that one, you know, I, that's long down ago, the water was cheaper or something, but they did work with us, and it does happen about individuals, or residential, in a lifetime.
She left ours all three different times, but every time I had to fork out money to pay for it.
So what was done with Jason and Jill, what was the problem there? They had to wait on somebody to come, they had to wait on the person to come fix it. So what was, what was the initial problem? They had a, a pipe broke inside the house. Somebody living there, yeah, right in there, right in the store. Oh, in that house, okay, yeah, right, yeah, right.
So, what did a gallon of water cost, a thousand gallon wholesale?
I have to look into the call or something, cause I can't remember.
Well, I think if you, if you figure the difference between wholesale and retail, as long as she pays wholesale price for anything over her normal bill, which I'd say forty-two dollars, forty-three dollars would be a normal bill, according to those two figures she gave us. So, whatever. So whatever, if you're between wholesale and retail minus her normal forty-three dollar water bill, then it would sell it to her wholesale price. Since, since she didn't know, if you know it's a leak and you don't fix it, that would be, that would be different.
Well, it hasn't been on the rain for three days after that, it was non.
So let me get, that's what I would propose. And you wanna make that a whole, uh, we will make a motion that Sharon's excess water usage. She paid her normal average water bill, which I'm gonna say forty-three dollars. The difference between wholesale and retail minus the forty-three dollars is what, uh, we should reimburse her for her water, or. No, reduce her water usage.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't know what that favor would be yet, but.
Now, 'cause I don't know what the cost is to the city. I just can't figure the gallon amount that you see.
Okay, do we have any comments from, yes, Sharon?
Um, I got Luke Law agreed to paint the building, the house, he sent me a couple renderings. Uh, I want the council to vote on whether or not you want one or two. He thought the second one was whimsical, that you could do like an Instagram pose. Told him I'd let him know, and he's gonna start immediately. Last month, you guys approved something.
Shelter house?
The courthouse.
Okay, okay.
And then once you're deciding on that, uh, Terry Hirsch put a plaque on the flagpole, Bob, did you help him do that?
I guess it's one room to get back real.
So Terry did put a plaque on the flagpole, and I, or did you put, hang it a flag?
Uh, yeah, it's kinda getting cold, but I don't get out, it's wet all the time.
Do you plan on hanging it in the summer?
I will hang it outside.
I didn't know who wanted a light, who would, would let it.
Light, you put a light.
A light would be nice.
Okay, so we're working on a light, um.
I get tired of carrying my little stuff store up there.
Yeah, I understand.
Um, we were talking about a light on the flagpole or on that old woodmill?
Flagpole.
The flagpole, 'cause they've got a nice plaque on it, and it can, the flagpole can just remain, the flag can remain if there's a light there. Uh, I told you last month I'd work on a Giving Tuesday letter, we have the Friday, Cyber Monday, Giving Tuesday. Uh, so within that, we had, our next goal is one that will strengthen the heart of our gatherings. We would like to do much-needed improvements that will ensure the Legion portion of the bank building uh, is updated with, where we at here? With community, to help with community mills, replacing anything that the Legion boys, guys need to replace. Uh, the refrigerator, the stove, so we would send this letter out, ask for permits, whatever money is raised, that money, just, just like we did this summer, Bob, we just send you, Greater Manhattan just sends American Legion that check. And you're taking care of the shelter house, so I think, I think with Giving Tuesday funds, whatever comes in, would help offset a stove or any of that, if that's agreeable to the council. Are you okay with asking for Giving Tuesday?
Yeah, I am, so.
Okay, um.
Which one of these were you favoring?
I, I don't have an opinion, I, 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 I like the windmill, 'cause it gives a nice tribute to the town, and that, and windmill was kind of important.
Right.
I don't know, it's whatever, you guys need to make a motion and let him know.
She's like the same dog, I mean, I like enough.
He, he just painted important on the wall.
Right.
So he, and he and his wife, Asha, came out and looked, and said that would be nice enough, if we could borrow a little more.
Yeah, you wanna charge that.
So I just, uh, the, the grant is done, we closed it out, everything closed out nicely with the state hands and town staff. With that being said, fifty thousand dollars has poured into this community within the last four years through match days and support and community and alumni, which is pretty, yeah, I, pretty, pretty impressive for any. If you think about Horton building their ball field and raising money for their ball field, fifty thousand dollars is nothing to laugh at, so I'm, I'm, I think this community should be pretty proud of themselves for the support. So thank you for supporting. Favorite pitch, really nice.
I know.
So. That's it. Bob, do you wanna?
Yeah, well, yeah, I do, but are you gonna vote on this, or?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you need to build it, I make a motion for you.
Before I vote it, what?
The windmill? Yes, the windmill.
Number one, on the windmill?
Okay.
Number one.
Luke's second.
This is supposed to be a poll, like, on any day.
I'm not sure.
I guess, I guess, uh, before going to parlor, I guess we should have.
Because, I can see.
We did the motions, you still don't vote, that was last month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the month before.
It's only been approved for them to do it, they just have to figure out.
Throw in the picture. Yeah, we can just goes on the picture number.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Uh.
Okay, each one of you should have, should have a, an information copy of the use agreement that the American Legion guys have come up with. It's, it's pretty simple agreement, we're asking the people that want to use it for a fifty-dollar deposit for cleaning fee, which is fully refundable. We're asking, uh, not asking for a set fee, we just say donate to the Legion, and they'll give you a tax, or a tax deductible receipt for your donation, and that you leave it as nice as you found it.